Hello, I'm Chelmsford Town Manager Paul Cohen and welcome to the April 2019 edition of the Town Managers Roundtable. I'm joined this month by Colleen Stansfield, as usual, town meeting rep, former planning board member, assistant in the planning office, and also by finance director John Souza, who's also our treasurer-collector and also, you know, you'll see his presence at town meeting as well. And the purpose of today's meeting is to sort of preview the spring annual town meeting. It's hard to believe, John, we're doing fiscal year 2020 budget.
It is. He is starting to roll together.
Exactly. But, you know, there's a lot on the warrant this year. There's 27 articles. I don't think this will go down in history as sort of an historic town meeting because there were, in terms of the shape of the town, because there's only one zoning article on the warrant, there are no general bylaw articles, sort of the opposite of what we had at the fall town meeting. But at this town meeting, it's mostly financial. And John, to sort of get started, as finance director and in terms of finances, one of the big things you do was the capital budget for the town. And I know this year we've got a very detailed and developed capital expenditure plan. So why don't you sort of just highlight that since you chaired that committee and will be presenting at town meeting?
Sure. Thanks, Paul. Colleen, it's you. You know, the capital planning committee started, we started with about $4.9 million of requests, had the very difficult job of paring that down. We have 16 projects. I'll be doing a detailed presentation at town meeting for everyone. The total plan, it's about $3.47 million. But just to walk through some of the highlights, some of the major expenditures will be, this year, we have, the fire department has engine four is being replaced. The current engine, it's a 2007, has about 6,500-plus hours on it. And you can imagine with all the calls that they respond to, there's a lot of wear and tear on those vehicles. So that's something the chief brought forward, and that has a price tag of just under $720,000.
And that'll be kept as a reserve engine, the existing?
Exactly. So that's, that will be recycled or repurposed, if you will, into a reserve engine. Some of the other highlights, Public Works, school facilities, and technology, just to hit some of those areas. In school technology, there's a large security and surveillance upgrade project that'll cover the two middle schools, and also central administration. That price tag on that's about $440,000. And there's also some enhancements and upgrades planned for the kitchens, and I'll touch actually five schools. And in the kitchens, what they're trying to do is do a lot of upgrades, bring everything up to code. You know, they are older buildings, modernize things. For example, a lot of the kitchens have the older butcher block style food preparation surfaces, and they'll be replacing those with stainless steel, improving the ceilings so that they're washable ceilings, adding some exhaust, new exhaust hoods. So they're trying to cook more in the kitchens instead of actually bringing food in. So these are enhancements that will help those school buildings.
And the stainless steel helps with the allergies and all that?
The allergies, I think the cleanliness and that, you don't want particles being trapped into wood surfaces. So that's something they wanted to move towards. The other thing, if any of you have ever parked at the nearby Harrington School near the studio, just down the road, you know that parking has been short supply, there's been issues with cars parked along Richardson Road. So in the capital plan, it's just over 200,000. There's a project that will enlarge or enhance the parking area and add about 30-something spaces.
That's right out front too, isn't it?
Yeah. So Public Works will be working on that.
Right. Right. So any other highlights of the capital plan, John, that you can think of?
Just, basically just those projects, the kids, see, the Harrington, oh, and another big, larger project for folks that come into the town office building. It's an older building.
Oh, yeah. That's right, the roof.
The roof's being replaced. It's about 23 years old. The building itself is over 100 years old, but of course, the roof is not. But the roof's at the end of its useful life for those that may have come in the building a year or two ago, sustained some damage during the winter storm, and facilities made the emergency repairs. But we basically know that the roof's at the end of its life, so.
Yeah. And as a former school building, it has a multi-layered roof, you know, in terms of different levels, and you know, you've got the part over the gymnasium, then you've got the part, you know.
Yes.
It is a school roof, because it's a former school roof.
Yes.
It's not just a nice flat squared area.
No, it's, it's, Public Works Director Gary Persicetti described a capital, there were a lot of challenges, as I think he said, there's four different roof lines, and so it's, as you said, it's not your, a very simple roof.
So the entire roof will be replaced, all four?
Entire roof will be.
Yeah, it's a flat roof, yeah, flat rubber roof. And speaking of roofs, there's a transition here. Neshobatech is also coming for a roof project at this year's town meeting. They've got a $3.7 million roof project for sections of their roof area. The good news on their project is, is because it is a school building, they can get a 55% reimbursement from the state. And then once you reapportion that over the, you know, the nine district communities, you know, the cost is rather modest for Chelmsford and the other towns, so, because it's paid off over a 10-year period. So they'll be coming forward with an article, as well as their budget assessment for $3.1 million, you know, for the students heading at Neshobatech for fiscal year '20. The enrollments are pretty stable, as we, you know, as we've heard from the district school committee at their budget presentation and at the finance committee. It's now roughly, it costs about $20,000 per student at the Vogh School, and we're over $15,000 at the Chelmsford Public Schools. So, so their assessment is in, and, you know, their budget just grew modestly. And the same thing for the Chelmsford Public Schools, as another segue, you know, their budget funding from the town is $61 million this year. That's a $2 million upgrade from the previous year. And, you know, they've got, you know, they've, they've got a very ambitious program that, you know, the school on telemedia had a budget hearing in which Dr. Lang explained what was going on with their budget. And also, they've been before the finance committee, and, you know, it's, it's, it's in a good position. I mean, things seem to be stabilized there. The enrollments, again, tend to be rather flat, you know, if slightly declining. And I think their situation is, you know, they've finally were able to, you know, sort of, you know, sort of stabilize. And I think the big question is, and this is something that we'll see in the, in the state this year, is the whole question of educational funding in the, in the future. And so, John, I'll go to that, is, you know, what is, how are things sort of in general for the town in terms of the budget development and, you know, sort of state aid and so forth?
Yeah. It's, you know, when folks look at the budget this year, it's a $137 million budget. One of the challenges for us as we sit and plan the budget for the coming years, state aid has just been going up very modest increases. I mean, folks will see it's going up just under 100,000 or half a percent. When you think of the size of our budget, less, you know, 90-something thousand, it's just not a significant increase or source of funding. So, you know, we appreciate any increase, obviously, but it's just not, and that makes us rely more heavily on the property taxes of funding, source of revenue.
I was just going to ask you, what are the largest areas of state aid?
State aid by far is Chapter 78, aid for education, and then unrestricted general government aid.
Does that include the Chapter 90?
Chapter 90 is separate, because it's really, it comes in separately for.
Yeah, they borrow for roads, so that's a separate appropriation by the state for what, and, but, but for the state aid, it's, we got about 15 million in state aid, but yet our budget is now, you know, 137 million, so it's, it's a very small proportion of the town's budget.
So what we're seeing is state aid represents a declining percentage of the budget over time. So it's just, and I know a lot of towns, Chelmsford's not alone, are kind of struggling with this, that, you know, 20 or 25 dollars of additional Chapter 78 per student, it's just a very small cost of.
It doesn't, it doesn't keep pace with inflation.
Right.
So if you're providing a cost of living adjustment to the employees of the schools, it's not even covering a fraction of that, not to mention your other costs that you could have driven by you by, you know, benefits and so forth, and utilities and such. And sort of on that, John, in terms of the budget, and I know, again, another one that you're tuned in is the pension assessment, middlesex retirement. I know you're the town's rep.
Yes. You know, the pension assessment, you'll see in the budget, it's going up about, it's increasing about 6.5%, just over half a million dollars. And the reason for that is we're continuing to pay out the town's share of the unfunded liability, which is on, we're on course, you know, which is, it's a mandated schedule that we have to follow, but we'll be on course to retire that liability by 2035, which I know.
Which sounds far away. It's only about 15 years.
Exactly. Yeah, we're still on that schedule, so that's.
This is the OPEB?
This is actually separate. This is retirement.
Oh, okay.
And the OPEB deals with health insurance for retirees. And that kind of fits into the whole, when folks review the employee benefits area of the budget, you'll see that the town caught a little bit of a break this year, and that usually when you hear all the stories about health insurance in the media, we caught a break, so to speak, because usually our premiums go up and our, to cover all the active employees, retirees, you're talking a little over $12 million. So for every 1% increase, that's a significant amount. This year's kind of an unusual year. We had basically, the, the premiums were flat, or basically like a half a percent or something in that area. So we didn't have any significant health insurance increase for premiums.
What do you account for that?
Basically, what we think, what we think it is in talking with our provider is that people are starting to be more cognizant of the utilization. And by that, I mean, you know, now that co-pays have gone up.
Deductibles.
In deductibles, people are thinking a little bit before, you know, you're going to think, you know, if you need to go to the emergency room.
You go.
You have to go. But maybe you think about it more if it's not a true emergency and think, you know.
And money's coming out of your pocket every time you show up there.
Right, right.
Or go to the pharmacy, what have you.
So utilization's being a little, you know, it's a little more, people have a financial stake in it.
It's good news.
Yeah.
It's costly. I mean, the town's share of a family HMO plan now is $18,000, and for an individual, it's around $10,000. And obviously, the employees is, you know, a quarter of that, so it's, you know, when you, it's, it's a real burden. I mean, you look at what's taken out of your check every week for your health insurance plan, if you're, and then plus, you're now getting hit with co-payments and deductibles. It's, you know, it's a major part of a consideration in terms of lifestyle.
Yeah. It's, it's true. So what we're able to do this year is to try to use this one-time savings on health insurance. We actually were able to, subject, you just asked about OPEB, which is the liability that, that we have for future health insurance costs for all our retirees. It means other post-employment benefits. We were able to increase our funding for the OPEB liability trust fund by about half a million using the savings on the health insurance. Because ultimately, you've probably heard us talk before a town meeting, our goal is to try to get our, get the town eventually to be fully funding our OPEB liability each year. We've been contributing about a million for about eight to nine years now, and it's a good start, but we, we know we need to do more. So if we can increase.
Right.
Get closer to fully funding that, that will put the town on a much more solid financial footing going forward.
And that's a 30-year schedule, so that's.
Yes.
So that, that should happen by 2050, so. So as I, John and I joked that, but our, our successors, when they're, when they're working in Chelmsford in 2045, after the pensions paid off and the OPEBs paid off, they'll be, you know, it'd be in good shape to manage the town. But, but it's a good thing, because you're not sort of kicking the can down the road and passing a burden to the next generation. They'll, they'll have their own challenges, as we know, ahead of us, with their own student loan debt and everything else that, you know, people are having. So there's no sense the government burdening them. So we're trying to be responsible in terms of really paying the real costs of what it, what it costs to run the government and provide benefits in, in real time in today's world.
And people have asked questions. I mean, we know that the state government has its own funding challenges, the federal government. So we, this is something we need to do here at the local level, is make sure that the town's on a solid financial footing.
Well, originally, when this started, I was under the understanding, a lot of towns were thinking that, oh, we're going to get bailed out by the state. And that wasn't the attitude Chelmsford took.
Right, it's just not, that's just, you know, if you look at the state's finances, it's just not realistic that, you know, they're going to be able to help cities and towns like that.
Yeah. And then, and then a real burden that's going to come down the road is going to be school proj, at some point, as you know, you may know, we're putting in, again, for another school project for, for high school. You know, I don't think the expectation is that it'll be a different story this year, but at some point, you know, in, you know, again, the generation ahead of us, they will have to address the schools, because as we always talk about, our newest building, the high school, was opened in '74, and the oldest being McCarthy was '59. And so, you know, and as you say, we're making good investments, and we're trying to prolong the life of those, but at, at some point, there will be an investment. And, and you're right, at this point, the best you can get from the state is half the cost. But when you look at what it costs for a high school, I mean, you know, you're already talking $180 million, so you're talking 90 million for the town to bear. And even if you're doing an elementary or middle school, maybe it's 130 million, and you're still bearing, you know, you know, 65 million or so. So I mean, it's, you know, the, the impacts are significant. I mean, the good news is, and John knows, because he does our debt issuance, we really don't have a strong debt burden, but.
No.
But it's a real component.
No, and it's something we're often, you know, we're often asked about or after and receive questions about at town meeting or other public meetings, and standard employees has looked at all of our long-term debt, and the vast majority, I'd say 75 to 80% will be paid off within 10 years, because there's very few items that.
Most of that being the sewer project.
Right. And, and segueing in back to the budget, debt service area, it's really, it's declining in total about 90,000 or so, and our non-excluded debt, which is paid within the tax levy, is actually staying relatively flat. It's going down about 8,000 to 10,000. So, you know, there's no significant increase this year in debt service.
Well, leave that to Barrika.
Yes.
Because they're going to have, I mean, they'll be opening their, their new school for students in, in the fall, and then obviously, you have not only that debt service, but then the operational cost for that big school, and then, you know, because they've got to bring on people to manage that facility.
Right.
Because as we know, come, new facilities come, new obligations, such as maintenance and HVAC systems and so forth. So, so like you said, we're a little ways away from that. But one thing we are addressing, I'll use this as another segue, is we are making an adjustment to this year's budget to deal with the potholes on the roads.
I saw that last night.
Yeah. We, you know, we had a rather mild winter season in terms of, we really didn't get any of those major nor'easter storms. So as we, as we sit here today, of our $1.5 million snow and ice budget, we're about 350,000 balance remaining, and knock on wood, we shouldn't have much more going forward, given that we're at the end of, you know, end of March and beginning of April. So what, but we are, we did have a difficult, and are experiencing a difficult pothole season, because we've had a lot of the melting and the freezing days, and it's not just Chelmsford, it's, it's in the region.
It's everywhere.
And so what we decided to do was ask, and what we will do, was ask the town meeting, you know, to take 300,000 of that savings and provide it to the DPW road construction budget. And then what they would do is not fill potholes like individual holes, is what, they've done this in the past, is they'll replace sections of roadways. It might be a tenth of a mile, quarter of a mile, and basically do about four miles across the community, and then, you know, just sort of rip out those and remove and then replace with new construction, difficult areas of road.
It'll be a re, section of new road.
Of new roadway.
Right.
And that's, you know, because you, people experience that at home with either their driveway as a portion, or you go to, you know, oftentimes, you don't have to replace the entire roadway, because we will be doing that. Like, for example, we'll be resurfacing Parker Road in April, and I know the plan is later this year, they'll be doing Richardson Road the entire length. But this is basically going in and sort of doing surgical assessments on individual sections that are really in tough shape. And so it should, and part of the problem for this, and John sort of alluded it to the, to the shortfall in state funding for Chapter 70 education aid, with the Chapter 90, which is the road aid that you mentioned earlier, you know, that comes from the gas tax. And that's been funded statewide at $200 million for the past six or seven years, and the estimates, and Chelmsford gets about 1.2 million out of that. The problem with that is, is that, that amount is stayed static since they repealed the, what was going to be an inflationary annual adjustment to the gas tax back in 2014. So what it means now is roughly, we're only receiving about 40% of the amount that you'd need to keep your roads in good condition, you know, by continually reinvesting, because, and Chelmsford, we have 230 lane miles of roadway. You know, so, you know, if, do the math, if you figure that you want to replace a road every 20 years, well, you know, you've got to be doing, you know, 11 or so miles of road per year, and you're not able to do that with, you know, 1.2 million. You know, you know, roughly with about, it's, so you're, so what we're trying to do there is take advantage of a situation where rather than just throwing our hands up saying, yeah, the potholes are terrible, the state's not giving us enough money, we said, you know what, we have an opportunity here where it was a rather mild winter, let's go in and do some work on, on areas of road so that, you know, so that the condition of those areas are better as we move forward.
And as Public Works has explained, redoing those sections of road, as you described, is a much longer term and, and more cost-effective way of repairing it than having an employee go out, put patch material, and then it pops out a week later.
Exactly. So, yeah. So anyway, so that's good news. We're trying, we're trying to address the immediate problems.
Proactive.
As we deal with the, the longer-term problems. The other issues that will be in the operating budget that's new, I mean, the schools, you know, have some adjustments, that, you know, they're, they're adding full, they're going to be upgrading the full-time principals at the, assistant principals at the elementary schools. You know, they've got a curriculum coordinator coming in, it was discussed last night at the budget hearing on, on the language program. You know, they've, they've, they've adding, you know, a social worker at the Parker School. So, and they're also reducing some user fees, they're eliminating the parking fee at the high school.
Yes, I was going to bring that up. I was impressed.
Which was, you know, which, which, which is interesting, and also for some of the service organizations, that they'll be waiving those fees. And so again, I think, I think it's been a balanced approach to the budget, and, and I think that that will be helpful. On the town side, we will be providing a, an additional position in the police department so that would allow a, a full-time school resource officer in the two middle schools.
Middle schools.
Right now, in this budget year, we have a full-time resource officer at the high school that interacts with the program and the community there, and we've been sharing a, a full-time officer between the Parker and the McCarthy Middle School. Next year, with this additional position, each of the middle schools will have a full-time dedicated officer, you know, working in the curriculum with the instructors, interacting with the students at each school. And we think that that's essential, because a lot of the challenges for, for youth, as we now approaching, you know, fiscal year '20, does arise at the middle school level. You know, you're starting, you know, kids in the sixth, seventh grade and so forth, you know, eighth grade, it's a, it's a tough, tough period.
I think we know that personally.
Yeah. Exactly. So that's, you know, so that, so that'll be helpful. And then one thing we will be doing, and it's received some attention, is we'll be adding a community services coordinator in the town offices, which, which I think the best description of it is, is the, it's the equivalent of a veterans agent for non-veterans, meaning, you know, with today's world, where, where the, sort of the downward trend of support from the federal government and the state government, there's a lot of issues at the local level where people, you know, sort of don't know where to turn and need assistance on, on social areas, whether it has to do with, you know, effects from, you know, substance abuse or opioids, or depression, or, you know, suicide, hoarding, you know, somebody may have problems as a result of abusive relationships, behavioral problems, you know, a variety of issues, or even something that, you know, somebody may have a problem with, you know, hunger, homelessness. I mean, we're seeing it in the schools, and both the vocational school and the, the Chelmsford Public Schools, you know, have sought funding and positions for this whole, what we call emotional and social behavior.
Social emotional.
And, and clearly, those issues go beyond the, the school level. And I know, John, you even, even your office, you come across those.
Yeah, people, you know, when people see me, they often think that I just deal with financial matters, which it is my, that's the main focus of my job. But as I can explain at a town meeting, my 12 years of experience as treasurer, I've seen numerous, you know, people come in, and what the problem is, is I, they kind of come on by radar screen because they're unable to pay their taxes.
Financial.
Or they have a financial problem. When you start to sit with them and talk with them and dig a little deeper, there are more issues affecting them, and sometimes they just don't know where to go for help or what help might be out there.
Yeah, it's a group of population that's just underserved, you know. It's not the elderly, it's not veterans, it's not students, it's everybody else.
Yeah.
Like, for example, they, they may qualify for tax exemptions with the assessors' office, but they don't, either don't know how to fill the forms out, or they just need, need assistance doing that. And, and, but I'd be glad to share examples, you know, no names, of course, but, but you definitely see those issues.
I'm aware of a few myself.
Yeah. And it's really meant to be a coordinator, because these are, these are issues that transcend the schools, the police department, the board of health, and so, you know, and much like Regina does, she can pull people together and, you know, and make sure somebody's heading in the right direction for veterans. You know, clearly, there's a load out there for, for the, for the non-veteran component of our community, and to enter and to provide some assistance. And again, we're not going to be, we're not going to be treating people.
Yeah, it's not a social worker.
It's not a social work, in terms that we're going to be, you know, clinicians, but it's more of saying, you know, where do I go? Oh, well, you know, you need to contact, you know, community teamwork and Lowell, they can help you with this. You know, you know, you need this, you know, some, some unexpected thing, because you've got a, you know, bereavement issue with a, an elderly parent, you know, this group can help you out. It's sort of, as you said, sort of doing the follow-up and making sure that, you know, and often, as, as was discussed, you know, oftentimes, that can prevent future issues from arising in the community. So, so again, that's, that's different in, in the budget. And also, the other mandate, as we call it in the budget, it has to do with the, with the safe workplace requirements. The Massachusetts, on February 1st of this year, adopted the OSHA standards, the Occupational Self, you know, Safety and Health Administration standards for municipal governments. And much like you see whenever there's an incident at a construction site or whatever, we're subject to those same inspections and fines and penalties and training and prevention efforts. So, so we have to, you know, now have a person to make sure, you know, because, you know, we have hundreds of employees with 26 buildings, from people in trenches to people at the cemetery doing work, to people in the schools and the, and the lunchrooms we talked about earlier, to just someone slipping and falling in a corridor, you know, electricians, plumbers, I mean, we're, we're running a full operation. And so we need to obviously maintain the training, maintain the record-keeping, investigate, report. And again, this one, we hope will prevent claims and, and also prevent injuries and loss of work time and productivity. And again, when you look at, we're running $137 million operation with literally hundreds of employees scattered about, you know, much like private industry, we need a person whose role is to, you know, to be on top of this and manage this, because if you don't, again, you're exposing your workers and the public who come into these buildings. It's not just the people who work for the town, it's people who come into these facilities, you know, libraries and what have you.
And although he'll be working, or she.
He or she, yeah.
Would be working in the DPW as a location, it's for the whole town, schools.
Yeah. It's police, fire, and you know what, I, you know, this came up in the discussion, I would like to have the person work out of the town offices, I just don't know if I have the space.
Yeah. We're hurting for space.
Because we, we have sort of the, you know, the business development director, she's working in the, in a shared conference room, and it may be something we'll have to look at, because ideally, I'd like the community service worker, the business development director, the OSHA person, sort of independent, because you said they're town-wide.
Right.
And ideally, they should be direct reports to me, working in the town offices. The challenge we have in the town offices is because of the requirements for meeting space, we're pretty hand-pressed, as we, as we know, you know, in terms of space. So we're, it's something we'll look at a little further. But ideally, that would be the scenario. One other thing I want to touch on before we, we finish up our time today is, we are also providing some more assistance for property tax by the senior property tax work-off program. For years, you know, Chelmsford was an innovator with this, you know, Bernie Lynch should be recognized for bringing this program to Chelmsford a generation ago. But right now, the program is funded at $100,000. We have about 150 participants, you know, who participate and basically, you know, provide[1610.75] and basically, you know, provide services, you know, through the schools, the general government of the town, and, and as a means to save on their property tax, so roughly right now, they're saving about $700. We are going to increase that funding, the proposal, like, to Town Meeting would be to increase it to $150,000, and then that way, they could earn about $1,000 on their taxes, so, you know, we're mindful of the fact that, you know, the average bill in town is, you know, is significant, people want to remain in the community, these are people who've made investments in the community, so again, I know the Selectman is, you know, you know, has split the rate, and, you know, we're looking at spending, and obviously looking, you know, here to provide some relief for those who need it, so that'll be another request to Town Meeting.
And who do, who do these people get in touch with if they want?
Basically, the, it runs out of the senior center.
Okay, senior center.
They contact over the senior center, they have a person who's assigned the responsibilities for doing the senior workoff program, usually it runs by calendar year, and so, but that's, that's how they would go. Or again, they can contact the Selectman's office, we can, you know, my office, Town Manager's office, we can direct them, so. We've got a couple minutes left, John, anything else you want to touch upon before we depart for, in terms of Town Meeting, I know we've got 27 articles, and, you know, it's April, before we do, yeah, it's, it's April.
We haven't touched on the zoning at all.
Yeah, it's April 28th, yeah, we're talking about the zoning, there is, there is a quick thing on zoning, the one zoning article is the Route 129 corridor, and again, it's to enhance the ability to bring amenities, i.e. some upscale restaurants, and there's this new category called casual, casual fast food.
Fast casual.
Fast casual, very good.
So it's not, it's not fast food, what we think the historic of the, you know, Jack-in-the-Box, McDonald's, Burger King, this is the places nowadays, the Panera's and the, you know, Chipotle's and so forth, and they all want drive-throughs as part of that, and so we're, we're tweaking the bylaw to allow that, because we do have a major property owner down there who believes that they will be able to execute a lease to rehab a building and, and bring in such a tenant to, you know, sort of get the, you know, the, the process going and